As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Wendy Stein Hilber. Wendy? Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you, John. This is Nick.
Okay, Nick.
I can hear you. This is Rachel.
You can hear me, Rachel?
Yeah.
So Nicholas Lynch?
Here.
Steve Chambers?
Here.
Todd Corain?
Here.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard?
Here.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressy?
Here.
And Darlene is not here tonight. Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, December 8, 2020, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we must, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and are encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the planning board is convened by remote participation for the public only. Although some members of the planning board are physically located in the selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall, those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. The public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this, that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the planning board and employees and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So we're off and running. First on?
John, it's Ronnie.
Okay. Rachel put Ronnie down as present.
All right.
Thank you, Ron. Applicant JT Acquisitions LLC requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of two buildings and currently vacant land with landscaping and stormwater management improvement on property located at 15 Technology Drive, Auburn, Mass., MAP 42, Parcel 40, continued from meeting at 11/24/2020. I believe this is being asked for continuance, Adam?
Yes, they asked for a continuance so they can go through the peer review that we received today.
Okay, may I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting, please?
This is Nicholas Lynch. I'll make that motion to continue this to our next hearing.
May I have a second?
Ronnie Brooks, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
An aye, John Regan, is an aye, it is a vote. Applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requests for site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.1 to 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for two-family dwelling and property located at 28-30 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., MAP 65, Parcel 70. This has been continued from 11/24/2020. Is there anyone from the applicant present? Is anyone from Eastland Partners here or representing Eastland Partners?
Yep, I'm here tonight.
And who is "I'm here"?
Good evening.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And you had something to say about the Eastland Partners request?
Uh, yep. Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the Board. We have submitted the revised site plan for 2830 Albert Street. And it's consistent with all the other lots that the Board has approved. What, what the delay was for this lot was its relationship to the 40B project next door and the shared infrastructure for the stormwater system. So the 40B has been approved, the stormwater system has been approved, and we thought it was the right time to bring this site plan back to the Board for, uh, to final approval. So, you know, that being said, I think, um, you know, happy to answer any specific questions that you may have regarding the site, but otherwise, uh, it's, I think, you know, we talked at length about it for a number of meetings until we put it on pause.
Hey, uh, does anybody on the Board have questions? Nicholas, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Ron Brooks, do you have any questions? Steve Chambers, do you have any questions?
Did we have perceived revised calculations on that? Um, I know we were waiting for the 40B project, but I just, um, I didn't see anything in our packet.
Adam?
Stormwater calculations? Yes.
Those have all been?
I don't know.
No, that was already approved as part of the subdivision.
Already approved, right? By, um, the peer review?
The subdivision would have been?
Yeah, VHB was the peer reviewer for the zoning board that they hired, and it was, the stormwater system was full, full design, um, you know, all the details, and it was, you know, reviewed and signed off by VHB and approved by the zoning board as part of the 40B approval.
Okay. Any more?
Thank you, no further.
Okay.
Nope, thank you.
Todd, do you have any questions?
I, no, I do not.
Uh, just a quick question, Steve. What has changed since the last time you were before the Board? I mean, it's been months, so it's hard to remember.
Yeah, no, no problem. Happy to cover a few of those items. So essentially, you know, some, I would say, configure, slight configuration changes in the basin, the stormwater basin behind this proposed duplex, um, but, but probably to the layperson might not even be able to identify the, uh, the configuration changes, but it was, I would call it tweaking. Um, so, you know, finer details as the pipe elevations, the elevations and contours of the basin, um, as a, as a slight factor of safety on this revised site plan, I, I raised the, uh, the elevation of the unit another six inches, um, but the general location of the unit, the utility locations, um, everything is as it was the last time, you know, we talked about it as a group.
Um, I do have one question. Up at the top of the page where it looks like there's riprap and then a opening for like a small head wall and the pipe goes down to D, Drain Man 06?
Yep.
Is that actually a 4.2 feet of pitch? Do you tell me how many feet that is?
Sure, let me, uh, get the plan up here myself.
That's pretty steep.
So you're talking about the invert, um?
Yeah.
So that's the, that drain manhole is the rim elevation. The invert of that pipe coming out of the manhole is about three feet lower, so it's really only about a foot, a little over a foot of pitch in that pipe.
Okay. Gotcha. That makes sense. I didn't catch that, was just the rim.
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public that may have any questions?
Being none, may I have a motion to approve? What? Hang on.
The Chair, EPW reviews this and they have one recommendation to have a closing meeting.
Okay, um, according to the town engineer, they are receipt of the site plan for 2830 Albert Street dated 2/7/20 and last revised 11/12/20. We recommend that easement be recorded for the stormwater infrastructure, basin access drive, and associating piping to benefit the reserve 40B project. All the comments from our office have been addressed. So are you willing to do that, Steve?
Yes, absolutely. Would have been something we'd done anyway, uh, so we're happy to have a condition. That's the Board's, you know, preference.
May I have a motion to approve with the condition that they record the easement?
Close the hearing.
Oh, sorry. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll take, Nick is making the motion, I'll take Ronnie as second in. So now may I have a, a motion to approve?
Roll call.
Roll call, make a roll call for closing the public hearing. Uh, Nick?
Yes.
Ron?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Todd? Todd? Myself as an aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve with the condition that they record the easement for the drainage?
This is Nick again, I'll make that motion, um, to approve with the condition of the easement for the drainage.
May I have a second?
This is Ronnie, I'll second.
Did you catch that, Rachel?
Was that Steve Chambers, the second?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. And myself as an aye, it is a vote.
John, you just said, um, first and second. You need a full roll call.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry.
Okay. All those in favor? Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
And myself as an aye, it is a vote. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, applicant SZLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a 13-lot, single-family home development, a property located at 178 Hampton Street in 19 Eaton Ave., MAP 12, Parcel 120, continued from 11/24/2020. They have asked for a continuance. May I have a motion to continue to our next, our next meeting?
This is Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Steve made the motion, may I have a second?
It's Ronnie, I'll second.
Thank you, Ron. All those in favor? Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Under Other Business, we have Protech Energy, One Henshaw Street, request for an extension of time. And they're looking for an additional six months, I believe.
John, sorry to interrupt. Could you just give me your roll call vote for the continuance of SZLL?
I did.
You're the only one. Just yours.
I, I, we did a roll call vote. Nicholas was an aye, Ron was an aye, Steve was an aye, and I was an aye.
You stopped it, Todd. You just didn't say yours. Sorry. I got it.
Okay. Aye, John Regan is an aye, it is a vote. Other Business, discussion Protech Energy, One Henshaw Street, request for extension of time. Uh, they're looking for another six months. Does anyone on the Board have an objection to that or would like to discuss it? Or is there anyone here from ZPT Realty? Uh, CBT Energy?
Yes, uh, this, yes, sir, this is Adam Christie with Protech Energy Solutions, representing ZPT.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I see by the letter that we've all received and read, I assume, that National Grid has really held up the, the production to get this done.
Correct, us and hundreds of other projects across the state.
Wow.
So we're, we're close to the finish line here. We anticipate getting our interconnection service agreement from them finalized in the next month or so, and once we receive that, it'll just take us a couple of months to, you know, finalize our electrical engineering, uh, real estate documents with the landowner, and, uh, apply for a building permit, electrical permit.
So if we give you the extension, you anticipate starting in the spring of 2021? Do you have any idea what day, what month and day that is? In order for me to give you a sec?
We're not. Correct, we're, we're requesting the six-month extension because I believe, um, the extensions only come in six-month increments. At least that is what the ZBA requires, and ZBA expires sooner than the planning board's site plan approval. So we're anticipating only needing six months for both of them. So we hope to, you know, start construction and file permits either in April or May. Uh, so we will be cutting it close. Now, the, the extension with the planning board would carry until September because, um, Adam Menard had wanted us to get on this planning board meeting rather than, uh, January to kind of do it concurrently with ZBA.
Yep.
So technically, this permit expires in March, so we'll definitely be starting construction before this expires. But we anticipate, you know, May or June start date. It's, we're really just consistent on National Grid, and at this point, the study that they just released in October, they were telling us it was going to be done a year ago. So I, I, we shoot for April and May, I'm sorry, May and June, but we're at their mercy.
And you want to finish in September. So if you start in May, we're looking at five months to get all the work done?
No, it's just a start construction. I don't believe the site plan approval, I don't believe the project has to be closed out when that expires. I believe we just have to have our building permit and, um, I don't know if Adam Menard can weigh in on that. That's been our experience with other communities.
Start construction before the expiration date. It doesn't have to be completely built by the expiration date.
Okay.
And my recommendation, you do a full year, um, extension instead of the six months. Just saves plenty of time, but the Board's?
I think that'd be wise, too. I was thinking the same thing, Adam, to extend it for a year instead of six months. Steve, do you have a problem with that?
I don't.
Uh, and Steve, I mean, I'm sorry, Adam. Do you have a problem with that?
I definitely do not have a, no, I do not. We, we hope to be done with construction by the end of next year, be, you know, in the event that National Grid releases us, uh, to do with the SMART program. So we, yes, that should work for us to be completed by then. Um, and if anything comes up, we'll work, you know, with the planning board, ZBA, and provide updates, especially as to schedule.
I appreciate that. Just that, I know National Grid's record on getting things done, so that's another reason for a year. I've actually paved, paved around telephone poles that they haven't taken, moved yet, a year in advance that they were notified, so I can understand your conundrum. So if you don't have a problem?
I appreciate it.
Is there any public comment on this? Being none.
Being none.
May I have a motion to approve a one-year extension for Protech Energy Solutions?
This is Steve Chambers, I'll make a motion to extend for one year.
Thank you, Steve. May I have a second?
Ronnie, I'll second.
Ronnie, second in it?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd, are you back?
Yes, I'm back. Aye.
All those in favor? I mean, I, myself, John Regan, is an aye, it is a vote. Next on the agenda is Whitetail Run subdivision bond reduction request. Is there anyone here representing this project?
Yes, um, my name is Ali from Creston Builders.
Um, I appreciate the effort you put in to, uh, give us a rundown of the, um, to lower your bond capa, bonding on it, but, um, we have a different, it's just the one from the town that recommended Bill had a different number.
Sorry? Yeah, it was, it's on the back of the sheet I just gave.
There you go, just a second.
Yes, I saw the email from Mr. Coyle. I agree with him. He didn't get a chance to look at most of the stuff because of the snow. I would take the present bond reduction, then I'll work with Mr. Coyle further along and come back to the Board again.
Because right now, um, on his point five, they did a site walk, preparation of as-built plans, additional 4,000. Installation of guide rail to cross covert located at Station, or near Station 8+0, 2500. Uh, there's a steep drop-off adjacent to the sidewalk between Stations 0+25 and Station 2+50. A fence is warranted due to the final grading, vinyl coated four-foot chain link fence, 10,000. The attention pond appears to be overgrown and will require maintenance, including brush clearing and loam and seed, another 5,000. Based on the above-listed changes and the cost provided by Creston Builders, including contingency, the engineer's office recommends a revised bond in the amount of $91,080. Had you seen that yet?
Yes, I have seen it. Actually, I got an email at, uh, from Adam this evening. I was trying to get it earlier, but, uh, obviously it was 11/2.
Well, you're breaking up. We can't, we're not receiving your message at all.
Good thing I couldn't do anything on it. I agree with, uh, Mr. Coyle on quite a few stuff. I agree with, uh, Mr. Coyle for now, and I'll get in touch with him in future.
Okay, well, we're going to make a motion on reducing it to $91,000. Just so you're aware of that. So may I have, is there any public comment on this? Being none, may I have a motion?
John?
Oh, guys.
John, can I? Yep, um, so do we have to approve a motion on either of those, or can we vote, um, remain as-is until they can correct deficiencies?
Well, there is no as-is. He wants to reduce his bond, that's how it works. If he has a $200,000 bond, yeah, you could leave it like that, but I don't know what his bond actually is or what he's reducing it from, but Bill Coyle is recommending a $91,080, um, that's what his bond will, will still be. And I looked at the, um, the breakdown and I agree with him, so I think we need to have a, a motion, um, to approve the $91,080 as recommended by the DPW Director, Bill Coyle. May I have a motion to approve the $91,080 bond still to be held?
John, it's Ronnie, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
It's Todd, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
No.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, John Regan, it is a vote.
Yep. It's the Air Force Hill, um, stormwater, type graves. Was it impacted?
It wasn't impacted, so.
And DPW concurs with it, so it's, if you want to go forward on that.
And this is for?
A subdivision, the Air Force Hill, Albert Street subdivision.
This is for? This is for their bond estimate? Okay, we have a, um, the next item on the list is, um, the reserve at Ashworth Hill subdivision bond estimate, and, uh, it is, their total round, it is $281,000. Bill Coyle has reviewed it, and so has Joanna, and they, uh, they agree to that. That bond amount is acceptable. Do you have any public comment on this? Being none, do we have any Board member comment on this?
Uh, John, I don't think I had anything in my package for that. Did we get a copy of that estimate?
None of us got it in the packet. It was, uh, delivered, um, Graves thing was delivered yesterday, but Bill approved it. He was in agreement, so I don't see any reason why we should hold it up or, or continue it to the next meeting. It's not a plan we're approving, it's just a, it's just the amount of bond that was DPW Director, in my mind, approves the bond, and I'm good with it. Anybody else on the Board have any questions or comments?
Not really a question, John, this is Nick, but, um, I would tend to agree with what you just outlined there. I mean, if they're agreeing with the estimate, then I, you know, I would steer towards agreeing with that as well.
Absolutely, because Bill's conservative, so. Thankfully, so. So do I have a motion to approve the bond for the reserve at Ashworth Hill subdivision, the total bond estimate?
This is Nick, I'll make that motion to approve it.
May I have a second?
Ronnie, uh, John, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Upstain.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself as an aye? It is a vote. Decisions we have to make are, I don't know who's having the, the mic problem, but it's very hard to hear. hard to hear.
I was gonna ask you a question. I was gonna ask you a question. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just didn't know a better way. This is Steve O'Connell on behalf of Eastland for that bond estimate you just approved.
Yep.
Um, so Eastland's ready to provide the bond. Uh, they've been working, um, you know, on their end in anticipation of this vote. Is, does the board need to authorize Adam to provide some sort of memo, uh, kind of memorializing the vote? Usually, you know, on the, on the developer's end, whether it's their bank or their bond company, like to have some sort of documentation other than Graves estimates or something that, you know, your board normally does, or Adam normally does. I'm just looking for some guidance.
The Chair, I'd normally write up a decision for these types of, of board decisions similar to the applicant, so I'll have something put together, um, for Eastland.
You're gonna put something together, Adam?
Yes.
To meet his require, his?
Yes.
Yeah, Adam said he would put something together for you, so it's memorialized.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Okay, decisions. We have meeting minutes of 11/10/2020. Um, I can't make a motion, but?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from November 10th, 2020.
May I have a second?
This is Nick. I'll second that.
All those in favor. Todd Corain?
Abstain.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
And myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. On the meeting minutes for the November 10th, 2020 meeting, I, I had a couple of minor corrections. I mean, I'm sorry, November 24th, 25th. I had a couple of very minor corrections. I'll hand it to Adam. I need a motion to approve as amended.
This is Nick. I'll make the motion to approve the November 24th, 2020 meeting, meeting minutes as amended.
May I have a second?
Ronnie Brooks, I'll second it.
All those in favor. Steve Chambers?
Abstain.
Wendy Stein Hilber? Oh, she's not here, I'm sorry. Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
An aye, John Regan is an aye. It is a vote. I don't think you were here, Todd, for one or two of those meetings.
Yeah, I was here for the 24th meeting.
You were?
Yep.
And your vote would be an aye or an a?
Aye, yes. It's an aye.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for skipping over you like that, but I thought that was one of the meetings you weren't here.
No worries.
Uh, new business unforeseen by the Chair, not from me. Uh, member town planner update?
I don't have anything.
Do you may have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so, John, I have, I have something to bring up to the board. So, um, we're, we're working on the, um, open space committee, um, about, uh, the open spaces in the town, and we're putting together a survey. I know a lot of you have been familiar with this in the past, but I just wanted to bring it up to let you guys know we're working on it, and if you had any questions or concerns, or would like to, um, have some input into the questions that we submit out to the town for review. So we're in the early stages, but just wanted to put it out there for everyone for consideration. And if you had any feedback or information, if you could, uh, share that with Adam or myself to bring back to the committee would be helpful.
Very good. It's a good idea. Anything else? Being none, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
This is Nick. I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, I'll second.
All those in favor. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. It is a vote. Our next meeting is January 12th, 2021. I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. You as well, all.
Happy holidays.